All right, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'd say welcome to our public, but we only have our broadcast public today. And Eric, you're up, direct your operations.
Yeah, been a busy summer, a lot of projects going on. I will say towards the end of last school year and into June, I did apply for a grant linking technology with law enforcement, and it was a FLOC safety grant. And we did get three license plate reader cameras on our property. They're at the entrances, they automatically read every license plate that comes in, and if there's any type of warrant or sex offender on it, they will notify the police department. We also added outdoor shot detection all around the facility, so back by the playground, the back of the buildings, parking lots. If there's shots fired on the parking lot, it'll automatically notify certain individuals that are on the list. We had that installed, and we have a two-year agreement with that. It was a $32,500 cost approximately, and we only had to spend $2,500 bucks. So, we also were busy patching the playground today and tomorrow. We had the blacktop, all the blacktop areas of the building there, the cracks were filled. We also fixed some potholes that made that parking lot. Been working with a lot of different contractors, getting the new Angie's store, Spirit Store, up and going. Been busy mowing, painting football fields, band practice field, all the maintenance items around the building, touching up paint. Just got done unloading a whole semi-load of mulch and blew all the mulch around the property. Put the senior banners up today, working on getting out of an Otis contract, which we did do. We're gonna schedule our elevator service with another company to save some money. Changed all the picture frames out in the building. Retrofitted all 24 light fixtures in the first-floor admin hallway. It's always been real dark in there, you almost need a flashlight to read boxes and names in the morning. Changed all those over internally, just bought the lights from a company, the bulbs. We did sell the one bus, instead of trading the bus in, to the Cardinal Bus for $3,500 bucks, we were able to sell it on Gov. deals for $7,100. I know Technology bought some smart boards, so we went around and relocated, installed those, relocated all the bulletin boards to other rooms. Stair treads, we've been around the building, stair treads are still gone. I did get verification today from the installation company. There's a possibility they'll be here tomorrow, but they said they'll be here Wednesday for sure, they're just waiting for the product to show up to them. And if they have to work all weekend long, they'll work all weekend long to have it up and all installed by the first day of school. We've already painted all the runners and the handrails to match the treads. We did order last fall, like the end of last school year, we were talking about getting new HVAC equipment, some heat pumps. Those have been put on back order too, and actually won't show up until about the middle of September. So, we will be getting those replaced in September and also in October. Also working with the Bureau of Workman's Comp right now on two other grants, adding power to the auxiliary gym leechers, battery-operated push carts, battery-operated pallet jack, used two-man drivable lift, new carpet by the playground, and a stand-on mower for the courtyard. That would all be 75% paid by Bureau of Workman's Comp, and the school would only be responsible 25% of it. And we also have a grant out there that we're waiting, the last item. Mike and I have been waiting for the company to come in to finish. They're supposed to be here Friday and Saturday this weekend to finish putting the glaze around the windows, so we added more ballistic film. Two months ago, they put more ballistic film on windows around the building, and they'll be in Friday and Saturday to put the call. They had to let the product cure for 30 to 60 days until they could come back, and that work's been done, and we have to have that money expended or return it to the state by September 30th. So, get that in just in the nick of time. So, it's been a busy summer, and we're ready for school to start.
Thank you. Any discussion? Are there questions? Principal reports.
Middle school, we are looking forward to having our open house this Thursday, August 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:00, where students can come in and get their schedules, visit their classrooms, and meet some of their teachers. In addition, on Thursday night, our 7th and 8th graders will have orientation in the Commons at 5:30. We're gonna discuss some rules, expectations, incentives. Mr. Klausing's gonna go over some of the Washington DC details, and we're gonna go over academic eligibility requirements as that is new to some of our 7th graders. So, all information that we will give to our students within the first week of school, but it's an opportunity for the parents to come in and kind of hear what those students will be hearing. Same with the 5th grade, we're gonna have our 5th grade orientation in the Commons also, but that will be starting at 6:00. And we'll discuss everything, basically, that it's gonna entail about becoming a middle school student, then making that jump into 5th grade, and what to expect, and they'll be able to meet some of their teachers and do all that. So, we're looking forward to orientations and our open house. We hope everyone can make time to be there, but like I said, if not, students will get that information, and we'll be sending that out to parents as well. I wanna say a big congratulations to our middle school cheerleaders. They won first place in the following competitions, five of them. Liberty Center, Elmwood, Holgate, the Defiance County Fair, and Napoleon, where at Napoleon they were also named grand champions. So, very successful summer for our junior high cheerleaders, we're really proud of them. And we're looking forward to seeing them cheer on our sports teams this upcoming school year. And speaking of that, fall sports season is close to beginning. Our junior high cross country opens up their season Saturday, August 24th, at Defiance Early Bird Open. Junior high volleyball opens up Monday, August 26th, at North Central. And junior high football opens up on September 3rd, it's a Tuesday, at Ayresville. So, wanna wish all of our athletes good luck. Exciting time with school and sports all beginning, so we're looking forward to seeing everybody. That's what we have.
Thank you.
All right, same as Mr. Tier, looking forward to seeing our high school students back at open house this Thursday. I do want to make sure that all high school students know that they need to check their student schedules, because we've changed all locker numbers this year. So, our returning students have new locker numbers, so make sure you check your schedule. Also, would like to remind students, parents, that come Monday morning, our high school academic wing does not open until 7:45 a.m. We really started enforcing that at the end of last year, just to kind of keep a control on things, so every day those doors will not unlock until 7:45 a.m. If you arrive before that, just make sure that you go down to the Commons. I'm gonna be meeting with all high school students, grade by grade, the first two days next week, so I'm looking forward to seeing all of our new students, returning students, and welcoming our freshmen, and just going over the expectations that we have in the high school. Fall sports underway here in the high school. Many of our students have been busy participating in various competitions. Boys and girls golf teams obviously started at the beginning of the month, and they've had several matches. Our first varsity volleyball game is tomorrow night, and it's here at home against Swanton starting at 5:30. Our first varsity football game this Friday at Patrick Henry at 7:00, and then their home opener is the following Friday against Swanton. Our cheerleaders have also been very successful this month, so congratulations to them on a very successful season. They racked up a total of four first-place finishes and one second-place finish. And then they're hosting our very first home competition this Saturday here in the gym, so I know they have several teams lined up. I think they had said 12, maybe, 12 different schools coming, so for our very first year, it should be pretty full. And then finally, our high school band has been very busy as well. They had their annual band camp at the beginning of this month, and they got their brand-new uniforms issued, so thanks to the school board for being supportive of that. Students were very excited to get those, and they are participating in the parade of bands over at the fairgrounds tonight at 7:00. So, hoping to get over there and catch some of that. That's all I got.
So, on the elementary side, I know both have mentioned about open house. Just a reminder, on Thursday night, 3rd grade, there always seems to be a little bit extra challenges with those kiddos going from 2nd grade to 3rd grade. I don't know if it's that stairway going up to that 2nd floor or what, but we're gonna have a parent night at 5:30 in the elementary gym, just to kind of talk about that 3rd grade test in the fall and the spring, and some of the expectations that change from 2nd grade into 3rd grade. Also, tomorrow is our preschool and kindergarten open house, so I'm looking forward to seeing all those little kiddos coming in tomorrow with their families. Each year, the elementary does a theme. This year is Aces Are Groovy, so if you have some time, I encourage you to go down to the hallways and check out some of the bulletin boards that we've got going on down there. And lastly, last week, we conducted a kindergarten camp for 20 students. As those kiddos are going through registration in the spring, we kind of identify some kiddos that may benefit from a very small group class before we add all of the scary big kids into the school. And so, just a huge shout-out to the United Way of Defiance for making that opportunity available for us, and just a huge shout-out to Ms. Lee and Mrs. Color for providing just a really fun-filled week for those kiddos. They even took a little field trip out to Penny Nature, and you know, Melissa Crawford is making meals for them. We have aides that come in, and they just conduct like a regular school day, just a smaller size, just to help make that transition better. So, that's all.
Angie, you have anything?
I would like to add that one of the reasons that Tools for Schools is so successful is because at the live drive, first of all, we get the bus, but secondly, we get cheerleaders and football players there, and they are very competitive. This is the first year that the football team beat the cheerleaders, so, well, last year, the football players didn't compete, but it was very close, within 100 points. But they earned quite a bit of money and brought in quite a few schools.
And Steph, I wanna say thank you for always organizing that. We always have such a huge success, and we're able to pack a lot of bags that don't even, I think we had maybe 170, 50, 170 that came through that we, I know that were packed, but then we always pack additional ones, so thank you for all of your work on that.
You serve center rocks. Okay, Eric, you got anything for us?
Yeah, a couple of different things. So, the adult head over four counties growing, but they're struggling to find instructors, especially for the STNA classes and the welding classes, so they're both growing, so it's a good problem. But the Lisa Arrowhead up by Toledo, that's gonna get renewed here, that's mostly for paramedic training, but that's really growing too. School started Wednesday and Thursday of last week. There's 481 juniors and 590 seniors, which is a total of 19 students from last year. And then the 37,000 square foot expansion, that's all being planned and underway, or will be breaking ground here pretty soon. The senior autotech lab is currently under renovations to make room for the new welding and electrical labs, so even though the big expansion hasn't started, they are starting on the small ones to get ready for that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Keith?
Yep. We held our annual new teacher orientation day. This year, we have six new teachers. We have some other employees too, but we kind of geared that orientation. We'll have our two-day RCA trip planned for September already. And then I'm working on the yearly emergency management plan for the district, which usually that's in June, but for some reason, it's not due till September this year. But that gets submitted to ODE each year, and then I have to run around and get signatures from like Police Chief and the EMA office and different people, so that's something we do every year. We currently do not have an OBI instructor for bus, someone that trains new bus drivers. We hope to eventually maybe get John, he's interested in doing it, but getting him to the training, he's a pretty busy guy, we haven't been able to make that happen. However, we were able to locate someone from central local that will be training a new bus driver for us that will be serving as a sub, so we're thankful for that. Special thanks to Eric, he's not here, but I tell him all the time, all summer long, how thankful I am for his team and how they prepare the building, how nice it looks inside and out, so he just doesn't miss much, so we're thankful for him. And then we're ready for Teacher Work Day, I think, Thursday, it seemed to be, and a huge shout-out to our Hicksville Chamber that always sponsors our breakfast force each year. We all look forward to that, and I have a special little surprise for them this year, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
That'll be fun. That's where I have to be Thursday.
I knew there was something.
So, you're gonna be somewhere else, right?
No, I'm going to Forest City the next Thursday.
Ah, there you go. That's all I have, Steph, thank you.
Yes, I'll be thinking of you while I am teaching. All right, we are going to move on to minutes and financials, and I do need a motion.
I'll move.
So, we have the minutes from the regular board meeting on July 15th, 2024. Treasures, consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of July 31st, 2024. Financial statements for July 2024. To approve amended official certificate of estimated sources for fiscal year 2025 as presented. Total general fund resources of $18,679,683.24. And total resources for all funds of $23,417,911.40. To approve fiscal year 2025 amended temporary appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $9,507,14. And total appropriations for all funds of $11,693,262.78. We need following then-and-now certificate for all American volleyball key-ups for $3,520. Approve annual reporting requirement related to the purchase of commercial paper and banker acceptances as presented. There were no commissions paid on any commercial paper purchases or sales. The following petty cash and change fund accounts for fiscal year 2025. Athletic change fund, $1,000. And I don't have an amount there, Mike, for the elementary petty cash change.
175, I think, is the total.
Yeah, just didn't, for some reason, put it out online.
Is it on the other one? It's not showing up on, yeah, it's on the original.
And then accepting the following donations, $2,000 from Ohio High School Athletic Association for Athletic Fund, and $5,000 from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for the Athletic Fund. Any extra information, Mike?
Yeah, I would like to add another then-and-now to this one here. It came in fairly recent, so it did not get on there, and that would be PO 2500300, and the vendor is Huddle, count code 300-4590-590-9500. This is in the amount of $9,200. And it is, well, it's the package that our coaches and stuff use for our athletic scouting and so forth. And as you see here too, the Athletic Boosters, that $5,000 donation went towards helping to pay for the Huddle package, so I wanted to add that to that motion.
So, just so I understand, Mike, the 5,000 is deducted from the 9,200, or is it 9,200 in addition to the 5,000?
The expense was 9,200. $5,000 was donated, which is offsetting that cost. So, yeah.
And I think that Hicksville Boosters is trying really hard to kind of revamp themselves and get things going, and so kudos to all of those involved in the Athletic Booster.
Yeah, that was an outstanding contribution towards that cost.
It's always been very helpful, even with like classroom razors and things like that. Any other discussion? Mike, thanks for the clarification. Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, the motion passes 4-0 with one person absent. Moving on to the employment of certified staff. I need a motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Recommend to approve Nikki Balsaman to create summer math acceleration materials for nine-and-a-half hours at $31.55 per hour. Recommend to approve the following as substitute teachers for the 24-25 school year. Kelsey Monroe, Casey Pepple, Addie Saylor, Amber Scranton, Dennis Sebanek, and Cindy Sprint. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 24-25 school year. Jennifer Bennett for co-high school student council advisor, Josh Fries, co-high school student council advisor, and David Moore for assistant junior high football coach. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0 with one person absent. And I need a motion for the next.
I'll move. I'll second.
Recommend to approve Paige Levy as a substitute teacher for the 24-25 school year. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levy?
Abstain.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes 3 to 0, one abstention, one absent. Moving on to the employment, again, employment of classified staff now. Motion, please.
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for extended days during the 24-25 school year to be served before and after the scheduled school year. For Tamara Chammell, 10 days. Recommend to approve a $50 stipend to the following paraprofessionals for CPI training. Mariah Anderson, Karen Meiser, Shelley Weatherhead, Jasmine Walters, and Shelby Ori. Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to services and agreements, a motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Recommend to approve a mentor program service agreement with Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Virtual Academy for licenses and other instructional materials for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve a technical service agreement with Northern Buckeye Education Council from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for paraprofessional services for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve the education option program agreement administered by the Wood County Education Service Center for the Wood County Juvenile Detention Center, the Juvenile Residential Center of Northwest Ohio for the 24-25 school year. Is that $88 per student per day assigned to JDC and $96 per student per day for the residential center. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0. Going on to old business, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move. I'll second.
Recommend to approve the 2024-2025 bus routes and designate authority to the superintendent to designate or relocate subsequent school bus stops. Recommend to approve the revised athletic ticket prices for the 24-25 school year. Recommend to approve the revised breakfast-lunch prices for the 24-25 school year. Adult breakfast is $2.15, adult lunch is $4.50. Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, just make note that the adult breakfast and lunch went up because we received a notice recently from the state stating that they had to be at least the price of the federal reimbursement, and so we actually had increased those amounts slightly back in, I think, May, and with this new pronouncement coming from the state, we had to bump it up a little bit again. So, that is the reason those two amounts were increased, because kind of more or less a state mandate, or a federal mandate based on the fact that, again, it's gotta match or be higher than what we're getting reimbursed.
And Keith, just to put it in curiosity for me, how often do you have to change routes within the year? Does that happen at all?
It does. Yeah, you know, if we have somebody moving in or something like that, we might have to add, and depending on where it's located, it might go onto one specific route, which means that maybe we take somebody away from that, you know, it just depends on routing. John and Eric are really good about.
Drive me through and figure it out.
Yeah, so it does happen.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0. I need a motion for the next part.
I'll move. I'll second.
Recommend to approve Jennifer Carrier as delegate to the 24 OSBA Annual Capital Conference.
Guess that's what happens when she doesn't show up. That was pre-planned. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0. I need another motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Recommend to approve Stephanie Mazur as alternative delegate to the 24 OSBA Annual Capital Conference. And this is why I'm glad that Jen is doing this. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 4-0.
And I'll need to know who all is interested in going to that before the 1st of September. I forget when they usually. I can't tell you.
It's November.
Look it up. It's November, usually the second, the first week.
Probably like, maybe the week of the tent?
I believe so.
I'm not positive, don't.
Any discussion? I didn't know Jen had brought up the thing about the free lunches being offered to the students on various schools and how that works, so even though she's not here, I think we should probably at least discuss it.
Yes, I would like to, it's shorter, start with a real quick notice. I had sent out to you guys a month or so ago, maybe two already, about the public records training. It's set up, I basically do the training, I guess I'm the representative for the school. I still think that if you get an opportunity, it would be good for all board members to do that. So, on the Alter States website, they offer the webinar, oh, about monthly, I believe, or every two months. But anyways, I did attend that, and that's the annual requirement for every board member during their term. So, since we've got staggered terms every two years, basically, I have taken this every two years, a three-hour training. At times, it gets a little dry, but there's also some really good information in there too about the ethics, public records, the sunshine law stuff, so anyways, that is that. And then the other item, I guess it may be a topic that has been going around in the community, Jen brought it up, but CEP. CEP stands for Community Eligibility Provision, and that is a program that all students in a district or a school building would get free meals. Now, there are certain criteria and so forth that's needed for that to happen, and that is that the reimbursement, federal reimbursement is based on a district's identified student percentage, ISP. And essentially, those are the students that fall under what's called direct cert, which are students that are qualified as free through SNAP, OWF, Medicaid. There could be a few others, but I don't think we have many that's regarding foster children, runaway homeless, Head Start migrant, so it's mostly those direct cert students we have. So, the required minimum of that ISP to be able to participate in a CEP program is 25%. It's based on the numbers from the prior year, and we're right about 29%. So, from that standpoint, we do, we have met the minimum. So from that standpoint, we do, uh, we, we have met the minimum participation level. However, you take the participation level, or 29%, you multiply it times 1.6. So whatever your percentage is, you do that multiplication. The program to break even, essentially to get 100% reimbursement, your ISP needs to be 62.5%. So we're a long ways away from that. And so, with our 29% times 1.6, our free reimbursement would be right around 46.5%. So if we, let's say, feed 100 students, 46.5 students essentially would be calculated, we would get the free reimbursement amount. All the other students, including the reduced students, which we have quite a number of those, they would be reimbursed at just the paid amount, which is 42 cents for this coming year, per student. The free amount is $4.43. So, and the reduced amount is $3.85. I did some calculation on that and used some numbers from last year. For example, last October, we served some 11,000 meals, different amount, free, reduced, fully paid. And compared that with the multiplication, factored it all out, our lunchroom would have lost about 59, almost $6,000 for that month. So, October wasn't the highest month as far as meals served. I also calculated for March. March isn't the lowest, but it was lower. Um, a lot of times, it's dependent on holidays, obviously December is holidays, there could be calamity days, et cetera. But, the amount for March was over, just over $5,000 is what we have lost. So, factoring that out over a nine-month period, would be approximately a $50,000 loss is what the lunchroom would have incurred if we had entered into CEP program. So, this is something that I want to continue to look at year over year, to see if it changes. But one of the, one of the drawbacks also with the, with the CEP program is it's a four-year commitment. So you entered into that, that's, you know, that's going to affect for four years. But we can look at it again, see where numbers go next year, see how other factors can come into play, and determine whether, you know, it's a good thing for our school, for our community to do or not. Actually, obviously, for the community, everybody would love that. But the lunchroom fund would take a hammer. It would just get beat up pretty bad. Uh, also, we did, there was a survey that ran around, went around with, uh, schools in the area. Uh, 20 schools responded. Out of the 20, 18 had not applied, had not entered into the CEP program for this year. So, I know there's been some rumors out there going around that everybody in the state has entered, while 18 out of 20 in the local area have not. So, um, that's not quite accurate. So, what do you got?
I would like to say, though, that, that I would encourage parents to still complete the free and reduce forms, because if they do qualify for free or reduced, they, they would get a free or reduced meal. It's supposed to everybody, but, so...
Any other questions or anything regarding to the CEP? I would like to also bring up maybe a couple other items. Uh, one of them is there's been something going around too as far as school district income tax and people receiving a letter, um, with taxes, maybe penalties and interest due. I don't know how, why this is out there, don't know exactly all the detail, but there could be situations where people don't have enough withheld because maybe if he sold a business, it could maybe be from minimum required distributions, pensions, different things like that, that maybe didn't have school district income tax withheld. So, anybody that's, has something like that, that you're getting income, that isn't having the school district income tax withheld, you may want to check with your tax advisor to see where you're at on that, so you don't get a, a, a letter at the end of the year saying that you owe. Um, so that, that's just one thing that I also wanted to bring up, so our community so they can be aware of that. It's not the school district that's reaching out and doing this, it's the state. The state runs the program. Um, so the state of Ohio would be the ones that are issuing the letters and requesting, uh, dollar amounts back. Or requesting payment. A little, other, a couple other items, it's just wanted to go, a little wrap-up of this past fiscal year that we just finished here, back, uh, actually on July 30th. The general fund, it was a very healthy year for the general fund this past year for various reasons. Uh, we finished a little over $700,000 in the black. Haven't seen a year like that for a long, long time, maybe never. But there's a number of reasons why the new state, well, the state foundation formula that entered into year three and six for the phase-in, they made some updates, cost base, um, year was updated like, four years. So basically, took into account what we get reimbursed from the state or paid from the state, four years with inflation that was added in. Um, actually, in reality, it should have been there all along, and they wouldn't have had a big bump there, but better late than never. Um, of course, uh, real estate taxes, um, valuations went up, that increased, um, some revenue there, went into the general fund. Interest income went up like a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, just the higher rates and, and moving monies around and managing that really made a huge difference this past year, a couple hundred thousand dollars more in interest income than the year before. And we still had the use of ESSR monies that we use to help, help offset costs in various programs. This past year was the last year of that, so that's going to fall off. So, when you look at that large balance in the black, we're not going to see that again. That's not going to happen this year. Um, the state, when they fund us, it's the second year in buying budget, we're not going to see the increases like we did, the cost basis is still the same, it's 2022, even though we're going to be in fiscal year 2022. I imagine it might take us at least a slight hit, rates are starting to fall just a hair, not a lot yet, but the feds have had some talk about reducing rates in September, so we'll see what happens there. Also, the lunchroom, so we've been speaking about the lunchroom, it operated in the red at $22,000. So, we definitely wouldn't want to add to that, but fortunately, uh, prior years helped to really build the balance, so even though this past year operated $22,000 in the red, it's still, the, the balance overall is very healthy, you can see on your reports that were sent out. And athletic fund finished year, $18,000 in the black. So it was a very strong year as far as that. I didn't really dig down in the numbers too much, but I think a lot of it is, is timing of expenditures. Um, you know, sometimes athletic department, if they're upgrading something in, in a sports or multiple sports, uniforms or whatnot, I think this year we're buying a number of uniforms. Um, we probably won't see that kind of operation again, 18,000 this coming year, because it's a track, I think got new uniforms across country, any other sports? Might have been, football got some new uniforms. So, those are one of the big expenses that come out of that account, uniforms. Um, also out of that account is, a big item is, is officials. And, um, if we don't see it this year, we'll probably see a bump in what they're going to get paid here in the near future. So obviously, I think most people know that getting officials is not easy. And, um, so, that's going to push the market where we're going to have to pay a little bit more, probably.
Is anybody bandied about what that increase is going to be for officials?
I'm not aware of it. Um, I think...
Are you reading some tests?
I don't know why anybody wouldn't want to do it. I'll have to put...
I'm one of those people who wouldn't want to do it.
I'm only going to say...
So, okay, that's, that's all I was, had planned to offer. If you got any questions, please fire away.
It was nice to see that, nice number in general.
Yeah, I, there's one last thing on the CEP again, I know there's been some other communities that have done it, like I said, not many, but a lot of it's really the direct cert percentage, that ISP percentage, every district's going to be different. And that just, that number gets farther away from 25%, the more beneficial it is for a district to go that route. So, you know, we were at 29%, we weren't very high above that minimum requirement.
Do you know who else besides Brian is doing that?
Edgerton.
Edgerton.
Ford County does as well.
Ford County is. Defiance is, Brian is actually doing what's called provision two. So it's similar to CEP, but it's not the CEP, it operates in...
A similar program.
Yes. So, Ford County did not respond to the survey. So I didn't know that one, but...
It's probably the administrator at Ford County. We will be going into executive session for, uh, number one, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, the motion or compensation of a public employee or official. Um, our next meeting, we will, we will not act upon anything after or during the executive session. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 16th, at 5:30. I mean, that's our regular day anyway. Anybody have problems with that?
I may or may not be here, we have a baby due on the 19th, so...
You will be here. I'll be, I'll be here.
You will not be here.
Are you having a baby? I don't think so.
Okay, so he will not be here, you may not be here, is that something we need to look, I mean, we have three with us.
We're still okay with three.
Okay.
There's, most things that we can approve at three, there are some things that takes four. Those are kind of a narrow focus there. So, if it's just our general type of things, we're probably okay, but we might want to make sure...
If something comes up, then we need to know so we can change that, that date.
Yeah. So, yeah, because if we have something on the agenda that takes four members to approve, well, we're going to be in trouble if only three of you are here.
Yeah, we probably are going to have to deal with her, Tom. Does it have to be you?
Probably not.
We could always, um, you know, either move the date or postpone it.
Who needs it?
Move it back a couple days or two.
Yeah.
So, let's wait and see when we get closer, Eric, and...
Hey, we're just happy there's going to be another Vedder baby. I mean, hello.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Hi, Jen.
Hi. All right. Um, so I do need a motion for us to go into executive session. Uh, we can take maybe a five-minute reprieve here, so that would be 6:19 to go in. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And Tyler, and roll call, please, Mike?
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion finally passes 5-2-0.
Good job, Jen.
Thanks. All right, so go ahead and take a small break, if you need one, please get cookies.